I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands its one nation, under God, indivisible, and every justice.
Mr. Dankert.
Mayor of Steam.
Present.
Councilmember Lawrence Anderson.
Present.
Councilmember Carolyn.
Present.
Enright.
Present.
King.
Present.
Austin.
Present.
Jordal.
Present.
Hagan.
Present.
Webber Quam, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item one is a motion for adoption of the agenda with the addition on fifteen. We need a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second? How in favor?
Aye.
How opposed? Item number two is a motion approving the minutes from October 3rd, 2016. We need a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second? How in favor?
Aye.
How opposed? We have no boards. We, under consent agenda, we need a motion for the consent agenda.
So moved.
How in favor?
Aye.
How opposed? Number five, under public hearing, is it, five is a resolution, public hearing for the abatement of taxes for five years petitioned by Scott Fox under the Austin Home Initiative Program. Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Mayor members. This is our second application for abatement, five-year abatement. The proposed development would be between $450,000 and $500,000 with an estimated tax abatement of $11,255 over the five years. Council action has requested to approve the abatement resolution included.
Okay, it's a public hearing, so council, do you have anything to, any concerns? For or against? If not, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody here tonight that wishes to address the council on this issue of tax abatement? If not, we need a resolution to approve or deny the abatement request.
So moved the resolution to approve. Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Councilmember Lawrence Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Scott, you're a little late. We just approved it. Okay. Item number six, under public, uh, public hearing for the Minnesota Small Cities Development Program. Um, Craig, is this yours?
Yes. Uh, Mayor members, we just need to hold the public hearing for Small Cities Development Program. This is in the crane edition. Karen Mattson is here from the HRA if any other questions are necessary. Otherwise, hold the public hearing.
Well, we started this program in January of 2014 and we had, um, we thought we'd canvass that area pretty carefully. We sent out about forty letters. We didn't get much of a response, so we sent them again. Um, then we started having people come in and we go through a spec writing and inspection process. We ended up doing, um, seven people, seven houses. Um, of the people that did respond, we found four people were over the income limit. And the income limit, for example, a family of two, it was $40,850, that's annual income gross. Um, we had three people saying, "No, thank you." They just weren't interested. Um, so then we sent more letters last year and, uh, in May, we sent probably another twenty-five, thirty letters. Uh, we went door-to-door. We knocked on people's doors. Were they interested? Did they have any questions? Um, we got nobody. We ended up doing seven people, seven houses. We put a roof on somebody's house. We made somebody houses, somebody's house accessible. Uh, we put a ramp on our house. We did siding. We did windows. We did some bathrooms. But, seven people. And now in Jan, uh, end of this, end of December, it's done.
So, is there any way to advertise it more, or, I mean?
It's done. There's not enough-
We said the end of December, it's done.
There's not enough time.
They can't apply now?
No.
Okay.
It's a very, uh, it's a Minnesota housing program and it's, um, heavily regulated.
Okay.
We did find some houses that were too far gone. You could put $21,300 into them. That wouldn't fix it.
Okay.
So, seven people are happy.
It was a success for seven houses.
Very successful. Seven people are very happy. And the rest, I don't know.
So how much of the grant did we use up?
Uh, it was for seven something and we used, can you put a number to that, Tom?
Approximate. We don't need an exact number.
Two?
Two and a half, and two and a half thousand.
Oh, at the high end, three hundred thousand.
So we used almost half?
Hmm, about, maybe.
Okay. That's, that's not that. Well, it's half. Okay.
Karen, do you think that, um, the geographic area that was designated was too small, or?
Um, no, I think what happened is that there's more people with more income over there than we thought.
Okay.
And there's, um, a lot of landlords. And this program was not set up for landlords.
For only owner, owner, owner occupied.
And another thing they disallowed was contract for deed. And there's several people over there on contract for deeds.
Okay.
So.
So is that something that would be shared with the granting organization that, you know, maybe created some impediments to people using the grant?
We will. They're, they do ask for, you know, surveys and a, and a response when they summarize the whole thing, yeah. And between, you know, our input and SIMPAC, Kin SIMCAC in Rushford, we will, you know.
Now, Karen, this is a public hearing. Do we need to take any action on this tonight?
Uh, no.
I don't know why this-
I think we just needed to have it.
You're just giving us a report. Okay. Counsel, any questions? Public hearing. Anybody in the audience have any questions? Okay, well, thank you, Karen.
Thank you for your good work.
You're welcome.
We now are to petitions and requests. Number seven is a resolution approving a lease with the Y, the Young Men's Christian Association for Austin, Minnesota. Craig.
Uh, thank you, Mayor members. Before you this evening is a proposed modified lease for a community recreation center working with the YMCA. Uh, this agreement stemmed from ongoing discussions related with Vision 2020 members to continue to look at another option to move this project forward. Uh, this project looks at it a little bit different way than was before the council before. Um, essentially, all the changes are confined to Exhibit D. Um, this provides $100,000 for the city's portion of the youth activity center and children's play area. Uh, does not include the other $100,000 that we had in the previous agreement that would have covered the walking track, discounted aquatic center, all access pass and pool hours that had different stipulations in it, so that part is removed from the previous agreement. Um, the agreement continues to provide, uh, the option for a family day pass for Austin residents for the aquatic center, but no limitation on the, um, fee for that. Uh, we also have discussed development of a scholarship program and that's something we've moved forward in good faith as we move forward with, before the opening of the facility and dedicate the $100,000 towards supporting scholarships for Austin residents based on, uh, some financial considerations for, uh, eligibility. Um, we'd work with the Y on that coming forward and would be limited at $100,000 on a first-come, first-served basis, among other criteria. Uh, we did a slight adjustment for what constitutes a broad community event to make sure that the Y would not be unduly burdened with this obligation, so there's a small change for that. Otherwise, the base agreement that was before you previously of the thirty-year agreement, option for the YMCA to purchase the facility after the initial term. Um, city ownership of the facility remains a responsibility of the city and operations of the, uh, facility are still the YMCA's, uh, as far as that's concerned. Otherwise, uh, we entertain council's consideration and approve, uh, the lease agreement included as Exhibit One.
Okay. So, before we start, I just want to say thank everybody that's worked on this. Maybe I should do this afterwards, but this is probably one of the longest, hardest things that I've seen the city, uh, take part in since I've been here. But, counsel, we'll open this up for discussion. Not a public hearing today. I'm sure there's people, are there people here that want to address couns, I mean, I don't think anybody's going to change their minds, but, counsel, do we have any?
I just appreciate the hard work that went into coming up with a compromise that I think works, it benefits all concerned and gives us all, both sides, the opportunity to, you know, review once the facility is operating and see, you know, it's, it's difficult sometimes to, uh, project what, how it's all going to work out until we have this facility in place.
I think I'd like to agree with Janet on one thing, uh, on this, is that the agreement we have in place is not necessarily the agreement that we're going to be looking at down the road. If, if it turns out that, you know, they're fiscally in doing well with this agreement, we can come back and say, "Well, let's change this. Let's change," you know, we could, there's things we can change. And hopefully, you know, it would get better. The only thing that the, you know, there's concern to keep the Y in the black. They don't want to, you know, they can't run on a deficit. And I think if that prob, if that turns out that they are fiscally sound, then we can have discussions about maybe changing some of the things on the, on the passes and things like that. So this is just kind of a, a beginning for us, hopefully. So, counsel, anything else?
Yeah, I guess I'd just like to thank staff for their hard work in coming up with this compromise that, uh, we had before us tonight, especially Mr. Dankert and Ms. Underwood for their diligence in getting this, uh, hopefully done.
And Craig worked real hard on it. Craig Byram worked exceedingly hard on it. He's not here tonight, but he really did a good job on this. And, and there were a lot of people from the Y that worked hard and from the rec, I mean, there was just so many different people. And of course, we're all fighting for, in the interest of our people, so it took a long time, but, and this is a compromise agreement. There's no two ways about that. But I think after looking at it, it's very much in the best interest of, of the citizens of the city to move forward with this, in my opinion. Anybody else?
I guess I'll just voice dissent again on it. I know, I thank everyone who did work hard on it. I, I know that everyone has their best interests at heart, but I feel this, there is a large portion of the citizens that are not in favor of this project and I feel their voice needs to be heard tonight. And so I will be voting against this project.
Well, I find that, you know, you've said that before and I, I thought about it. Most people have no idea what's going on. So if you knock on a door and you talk to them, and the people I've talked to, they, they have a lot of misconceptions about it. They think the city's paying for the land, the city's doing this, but when you sit, if I sit and talk to them, I'm in favor of it. If I talk to them and walk away, they're usually in favor of it. I assume if you're not in favor of it, you talk to them, they're going to get your side of it and they're probably not going to be in favor of it. So, you know, it's, it's, I understand what you're saying. You're not in favor of it. And that's fine.
Well, the general consensus that I've found is that most people are in favor, like, once they know more about it, just like the mayor said. So that's what we needed to do, is educate the public. And the ones that were educated, I think, in reality, was very much for it because there's a lot more good things about it. And things that, uh, this is, this is not a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity if we don't take advantage of it. Uh, I, I think that would be our fault.
I agree. Mr. Hagan, this is truly a gift for Austin. In the end, it'll be a $35 million gift. That's, that's nothing to sneeze at. I think it's going to be good for everybody. Um, and I, I think that a great compromise was reached, so I'm certainly in support.
Anybody else? If not, we would entertain a motion.
I'd make a resolution to approve.
Is this a resolution, right? Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember Carolyn.
Nay.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Nay.
Hagan.
Aye.
Councilmember Lawrence Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes five-two, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. I want to thank all the people. I know a lot of people are here tonight because of this.
We have to go through these other steps, Your Honor.
Okay, we can, yeah, we'll go through the rest of it. Then reviewing an administrative citation ordinance, what's that? That has nothing to do with this.
Do we have to go through each of these items, David?
No, that's the next one. Just a different thing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Never mind.
I can finish?
Yes, I'm sorry.
I have your permission?
You may.
All right.
I was, I was-
Why don't you do it for me, then?
No, I was confused about, I was confused about seven and eight. I'm sorry.
All right. Well, thank everybody that, that came for this. We appreciate your, your efforts and your concerns. And we look forward to working with the Y and making this a great success for the city. Okay. Number eight, reviewing an administrative citation ordinance is a series of, of motion and ordinance and resolution. Holly.
Uh, yes, Your Honor and council members. The, um, this item has been brought to work session a couple of times. Um, the ordinance was proposed in January 2016 and included collaboration between planning, building, parks, fire department and other staff. Um, there's a lot of feedback and review to try to get everything started off on the right foot. Um, we may have to make some amendments in the future if needed, um, but we are hoping that this, uh, administrative citation ordinance will allow us to enforce, uh, our ordinances efficiently in ways that, that don't really work with the criminal justice system. Um, and that our ability to enforce more of our ordinances will improve our quality of life in Austin and the neighborhoods here in Austin. Um, I did make a couple of minor changes, primarily just to indicate that, um, an ongoing violation could be, um, cited again after a ten-day period, which is in, um, is similar to our fire code, to make sure that we're on the same page there. The, um, materials include a short memorandum, a flow chart showing how the administrative citation process would work, a, uh, proposed ordinance, and then a resolution setting the fines. If the council has any questions, um, needs clarification?
Counsel? If there are no questions, we need a motion for A.
So moved. Second.
For preparation of the ordinance, a motion and a second. How in favor?
Aye.
How opposed? Then we need a ordinance for B, for adoption and publication?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Councilmember Lawrence Anderson.
Aye.
Ordinance passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. And finally, number eight, C, is a resolution for establishing administrative penalties. We need a resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Second by who?
Second.
Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Councilmember Lawrence Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Nine is a motion and resolu, or a couple of different things. Reviewing an off-sale liquor ordinance change and, it's a process.
Um, the liquor ordinance changes, um, there's two separate questions here tonight that, um, we're proposing. Um, the first of the questions would be to allow off-sale liquor, um, on Monday through Thursday to be extended until 10 o'clock PM. Um, current state statute allows till 10 o'clock PM, but our code allows till 8 o'clock PM. Um, so that was reviewed at the October 3rd work session and passed by a five-to-one vote. And then the second portion of the ordinance tonight, um, is the three-two beer in stores other than liquor establishments. Um, the state statute also allows three-two beer in other places than just liquor stores, such as grocery stores and convenience stores. This was also reviewed at the October 3rd work session and moved forward on a three-two vote. Um, since this is an ordinance, it has to pass by unanimous approval on the first reading, so if it does not pass, it will go to the next meeting. And then also, I would request that, um, the council authorize these changes not to take place till January 1st, 2017, just because right now, we're in the middle of our liquor licensing renewal process. Uh, we need to get everyone renewed before we make changes to those particular licenses, so.
So if this doesn't pass by a seven-to-zip vote tonight, it goes to the next meeting?
The next council meeting, yes.
Okay. Counsel, any discussion on one, um, allow off-sale till 10:00 PM, Monday through Thursday? If there is no discussion, we would entertain a motion for preparation of the ordinance?
So moved.
Is there, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And then B is an ordinance for adoption and publication of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Dankert?
There's a discussion here. There's a discussion? I think there's quite a few people here.
Well, anybody want to discuss the 10 o'clock part of it?
No, no.
No, we're on the three-two.
No, no.
What's that?
You're still on the 10 o'clock one.
Just 10 o'clock.
Fine, counsel.
Motion for adoption and publication.
Move for adoption and publication. Okay, you were the initial, is there a second, Dave? You were, the mic is the second. Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Councilmember Lawrence Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution, I'm sorry, ordinance passes seven zero, Your Honor.
All right. This is the second part. It's a motion for allow three-two sale liquor in establishments other than liquor stores. I'll let people talk if they want. First, I'm going to let the, you know what, I'll let people talk first because maybe the council will want to take what they say into account and to what they say. Come on up, you got it. Give, tell us who you are and where you live and...
Mayor, counsel? My name is Mark Lang. I live in, uh, Mauer County here. My family's from the city of Austin. We own a family-owned bar here in Austin, down on the east side, Bobby Joe's Bar.
You live in the city or in Mauer County?
I live in Mauer County, myself personally. Our business here is on the east side in the city limits.
And that is Bobby Joe's, right?
Correct.
Sure.
We've been a family-owned business for thirty-plus years on the east side of Austin. I'm here today to ask that you consider voting no against allowing other places to sell three-two off-sale beer. Just to give you some idea, my business alone, I can't speak for others, but Bobby Joe's, as of right now in 2016, 19.8% of my grocery receipts for sales comes from three-two off-sale beer. That's a huge number. That doesn't also reflect if they come in to have a pizza and grab some beer to go home and watch the game. Okay? If we pass this ordinance, it could greatly hamper my small business. Liquor establishments, bars, liquor stores, it hasn't gotten any easier in the past for us to maintain and provide employment for people and to sustain as a business. Um, for those of you that are familiar with Austin's east side, when I was a kid, there was five bars down there. We're down to two. Our profit margin is smaller.
I'm not doing it.
Plainly simply, come to bars just isn't what it used to be. If we allow other stores such as grocery stores and convenience stores the opportunity to sell this beer, it's going to greatly hamper what we do as a bar and as liquor store in the community. I don't have the option of selling milk and bread out the back door of my bar. I don't have the option of selling gasoline out the front door of my bar. I have very limited options to what I can offer the public. I offer alcohol and food. That's it. My food is on-site. You don't really take it with you. They come to my place to buy their stuff. I can't sell them clothing. I can't sell them bread and I can't sell them gasoline. So, I got into the liquor business. I didn't get into the convenience store or the grocery store business. If they don't like Bud Light, I can't bring in a new product. Beer is beer. Alcohol is alcohol. Um, I would ask that you would just consider this because it could really affect us small businesses that are left in town that are providing liquor within the city limits of Austin. Thank you.
Have anything?
Nope, we got some.
Somebody, okay. Come on up, give us your name and your address.
Dan Gosmore, 1302 28th Street, South West here in town. Uh, store director of the Hy-Vee store. Uh, currently on-site where we're at now and going to a new store next door into a new, modern facility, um, and a greatly improved retail experience. Uh, I would ask that you would consider passing this, uh, for the simple fact of its convenience, its convenience to our shoppers. Um, I, I think that if you were to ask any of constituents that you represent, I think that shopping and retail experience is any different. You know, having come from, uh, the state of Iowa, which is not way across the world, way short, thirteen miles away, fourteen miles away, I think there's a lot of cross, um, opportunities here. There's a lot of misconceptions maybe when, when-
Okay, so, okay. So there, there's a liquor store that's attached to your building, so they could get it there?
Yeah.
I mean, there's no bigger fan of Hy-Vee than me. I, like, I, really, with everything that went on the last year or two, I'm a, I'm a big fan of Hy-Vee. I'm just wondering about the liquor store, though. Okay.
So we would just ask for your support and we just, we just want you to move forward. Any questions I can help with?
Thanks, Dan. Anybody else?
I'd like to, um-
What, nobody else in the audience? Okay, David, I'm sorry.
Well, yeah, I, I, uh, first of all, I don't drink, so I'm probably the most unbiased person in here about this, this, uh, program, but I did go out and check with many stores with, throughout the community and see what would happen. And, uh, there's a lot of stores that this would affect. These are stores that have been in Austin for decades, employing people in Austin for decades, paying taxes here in Austin for decades. And if we take away their opportunity for three-two and open it up into the grocery stores, it's going to directly affect a business that is already struggling. And, uh, anyhow, retail's hard enough without putting unneeded ordinances and poss, and a possibility to put them out of business. So I'm saying let grocery stores be grocery stores and liquor stores be liquor stores.
And I can tell people that are here for this, it's almost a surety this won't pass tonight. I mean, I just know from before, so it hap, would have to, if, if we voted down tonight, does it still come to the meeting next week? No.
No.
Okay.
If I could, Your Honor.
Steve?
Ironically, I missed the last meeting when this was, uh, certainly first brought up because I was away with several other community members at a, at a grant, uh, training. Uh, Austin was, has been the beneficiary of the next five years receiving a million-dollar grant towards curbing young, young people using alcohol and prescription drugs. So when I was not here and you're talking about increasing the ordinance, I get that the statute allows for three-two to be carried in convenience stores, I happened to be at a training that's telling me, "How do I want my community to look?" Basically talking about positive community norms. I think adding that three-two to a, to be more accessible, adding alcohol to be more accessible is not what the grant certainly is all about, that we're going to be doing for five years. I, I, I just firmly believe that walking into a, let's say, QuickTrip and, and seeing next to the Gatorade, Busch Light is not, not healthy. Uh, I, 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 I just can't see my way clear to, to devote that way. Also, in my day job, I see a lot of, you know, plenty of citations for minor consumes. I don't think I want to make it easier for kids to be able to obtain alcohol. Walking into a QuickTrip is far less, uh, egregious than walking into a convenience store trying to fake ID somebody. Uh, I just, I just want my community, uh, to look different. I get it that it's allowed and I get it, you know, Hy-Vee, that it's, it's convenience, but at what cost? And, and, uh, I'm just not prepared to vote in favor of making alcohol more accessible to young folks.
Thank you, Steve. Anybody else?
Uh, I guess I just want to go on the record to, um, I guess, I, I like that we're being progressive and we're looking forward and getting our ordinances up to date with what the state allows and with what most every other state or city in the state allows. Uh, but I guess I would have to agree with Mr. King that I think the biggest issue is solved by the ordinance that we just passed by allowing the, the current, um, liquor stores to stay open later, uh, and sell product, uh, rather than expanding the availability of the product, make it more available where it's already sold instead of expanding availability, uh, into places that aren't necessarily used to selling this product. And it's going to make, uh, I think, an issue with underage drinking possibly and enforcement of that. So I guess I would not be in favor of this ordinance change.
Anybody else?
All right, I'm in favor of the ordinance change. I handed out something to the council up here that has maps of the United States, show other states. And I know you said be a grocery store, be a liquor store, but in the rest of the country, grocery stores are, they sell strong beer in almost every state in the rest of the country. So we're, Minnesota's one of the few that, that does not, that only allows three-two beer. So I mean, it's, I guess that's, uh, was a strange thing to hear because grocery stores are where you get beer in most, most parts of the country. Uh, that's where, I mean, growing up, like, I was used to seeing, I was from Iowa, so I was used to seeing beer. And I guess, I don't know, I don't think it turned me into a raging alcoholic, so, um, the, so that just is a strange thing for me coming, um, coming up here. But, uh, the idea too, to protect, we talk about protecting the liquor stores or whatever, but I, I think as an American, there's nothing wrong with, with, uh, fair competition and, and free markets. So I think, you know, it would be who, it would be best for our citizens to have more choices in where they can buy it, three-two beer. And this is, yeah, we're only talking about three-two beer. It's a small, if you still want to get any other type of alcohol, wine or liquor or regular beer, you'll still have to go to a liquor store. So it's a, it's a very, very small thing. I, I just, to, to me, like I said, it seems crazy that it's even a conversation, I guess, so.
I, I do wonder about, for example, Mr. Lang's, uh, comments that, that, you know, hopefully in cases, if, depending on where this goes, but just in general discussion that there'd be some customer loyalty and some- that there'd be some customer loyalty and some things like that, that would, that would maybe benefit you. I'm not sure, and obviously, I don't, I can't guarantee that, but any of the, you know, the establishments that are concerned about that, I'm, I'm wondering if that isn't something that could perhaps play in as well. You know, if, depending on how things go, that, um, people would still come to Bobby Joe's or whichever establishment that they typically patronize.
Yeah. All right, keep it short, Mark.
Okay, um, just a quick point on customer loyalty.
Yeah, come on up here, nobody can hear you.
Just because it's on TV, they want to know what you said.
About the customer loyalty, again, I'm Mark Lang. Um, yes, I would, I would also hope that I would have customer loyalty. However, in our economy and society, it's all about the dollar. If I can save a dollar somewhere and I'm close and it's quote-unquote convenient, I'm gonna save a dollar. Large establishments, such as grocery stores, bigger convenience stores, they have more opportunities to purchase in larger volume than smaller businesses. Therefore, they can get their product at a lot less cost than I can. I can't compete with their costs, because I can't purchase that amount to sell it for what they sell it for. So, yes, I would hope we would retain some loyalty, but when it comes down to it, if they can save a dollar and they're there, they're gonna do it, and I don't blame them for that.
Okay, thank you for your comment.
Okay. I don't vote on this unless it's a tie, but I think I should take a position. I am against this ordinance for the reason that Steve mentioned, and I think it would hurt the businesses that it hurts more than it would help the businesses that it helps. The ones that it would hurt are, are very marginal, and I think they're, they're, they're living on a bare profit margin, and the ones that would help don't need it as much as the people that already have it. With that, is there anybody else that has anything to add? Council, let's have a, or, let's have a, a motion.
I would motion, uh, for preparation of the ordinance to allow three-two off-sale liquor in establishments other than liquor stores.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Dankert, would you do a roll call for, please?
Councilmember Jordal, second. By Councilmember Carolyn's in favor of the ordinance. I vote in favor of that. Councilmember Carolyn?
Aye.
Enright?
Epstein.
King?
Nay.
Austin?
Nay.
Jordal?
Aye.
Hagan?
Nay.
Councilmember Large Anderson?
Aye.
Well, I guess for the third time since I've been mayor, I vote, and I'm gonna vote no.
Vote fails, your honor, report.
So this will not come to the council in two weeks? All right, thank you. We will move on to, ten is a resolution accepting donations to the city of Austin. Self-explanatory, we do this...
So move the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
No in favor? Or, Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember Carolyn?
Aye.
Enright?
Aye.
King?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Jordal?
Aye.
Hagan?
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson?
Aye.
Resolution passes seven-zero, your honor.
Thank you. Eleven is a resolution approving final project costs for the Austin Municipal Airport Payment Rehabilitation Project. Mr. Lang?
The project that you just, the project that you described, uh, is occurred in our, at our Austin Municipal Airport in the summer of 2015. Uh, the cost items associated there are all the same as what was previously approved with payment voucher number one. All we are doing is finalizing this and formalizing it as payment voucher number two, excuse me, final payment voucher number two. And the only other item pertaining here is over the winter of 2015, 2016, we did see some sand separation from the slurry mix, so we want to monitor that for one more winter season, and therefore, the contractor has provided an additional warranty through May of 2017 to allow us time to review that slurry sealed product and how it maintains over the second winter, and determine at that point if any corrections are necessary. So at this point, we would recommend approval for this, uh, project, finalizing these costs.
Council, anything? If not, we need a resolution for item number eleven.
So move the resolution.
Second.
Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember Carolyn?
Aye.
Enright?
Aye.
King?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Jordal?
Aye.
Hagan?
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson?
Aye.
Resolution passes seven-zero, your honor.
Thank you. Twelve is a resolution awarding engineering services, review services to S E H on Turtle Creek Flood Mitigation Project. Mr. Lang?
As council, where we've been working on a flood mitigation project on Turtle Creek for a few years now, and part of that process and what has been a bit of a hang-up for us is the evaluation of floodwaters and rainfall, uh, frequency events, um, and the current design by Baldemink, uh, we're looking at some high cost for stormwater and pumping stations involved as part of the project. So something, uh, we are another, trying to look at another angle with a different consulting firm, S E H. They have a great deal of experience with, uh, flows on the Cedar River, evaluating those as part of our North Main Flood Control Program. And as we've talked about in the past, the Cedar River is very impactful to Turtle Creek. So using some of S E H's knowledge, we're looking at trying to give maybe a second opinion, some value engineering involved with this, having S E H look at some of these, uh, design calculations, frequency analysis, to determine if we can reduce that, um, rainfall chance in order to allow us some cost savings on the overall construction of the project. So therefore, I would recommend approval of the $8,000 proposal by S E H to review and take a second look and maybe a different angle at some of these, uh, calculations that have been made by another consulting firm.
Council? Then we need a resolution for twelve.
So moved.
Is, is, Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember Carolyn?
Aye.
Enright?
Aye.
King?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Jordal?
Aye.
Hagan?
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson?
Aye.
Resolution passes seven-zero, your honor.
Thirteen, thank you. Thirteen is a resolution declaring the property located at 601 10th Avenue Southwest a hazardous structure. Any questions on this? If not, we need a resolution.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember Carolyn?
Aye.
Enright?
Aye.
King?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Jordal?
Aye.
Hagan?
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson?
Aye.
Resolution passes seven-zero, your honor.
And our final action of the night is two motions for, oh, no, we got fifteen, too, I'm sorry, but fourteen, uh, there's two motions for granting planning and zoning department authorization to remove junk and refuse at the following locations, 401 21st Street Southwest, Durin Property. We need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? B, 707 9th Avenue Southwest, Whalen Property, need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And I know I got fifteen here somewhere. Fifteen is a resolution approving final project costs on the wastewater treatment plant excess flow improvement project. Stephen, I'm guessing this is you.
Yep, uh, project on the wastewater treatment plant where, uh, project council's very likely familiar with, construction of two 1.5 million gallon excess flow tanks. Uh, the project was started in 2013, and we have now finalized the project with Wapah Shaw Construction Company.